Counsel, it is officially seven o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
United States, America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and your God, whose as well with liberty and justice we're all.
Okay, up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez.
Counselor Carson. Counselor Vehill.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Counselor Daniel.
Here.
Counselor Grego.
Present.
And Counselor Hensley previously requested to be excused.
Okay, thank you. The next item we have is the agenda approval. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, excusing Ms. Daniel from the meeting.
I'll second.
Counselor Hensley.
They want to excuse. Counselor Hensley from the meeting, excuse me, sorry about that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Martinez, would you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Vehill.
Yes.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
A motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we have any citizens who would like to come up and make any comments. Please come up to one of the mics at the podium and make your comments. We have a three-minute limit right here on the clock. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're still talking, after three minutes, I will politely ask you to end the comments at that time. I have only one card right now, and it is, we're fortunate to have Alamosa County Commissioner Lori Lasky. Welcome to our meeting tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, I know I will be really quick in less than three minutes, but I wanted the opportunity to come and introduce myself tonight if I haven't had the chance to meet some of you. One of the things that I've found is that you think you know everybody, and then all of a sudden you feel like, maybe I should make sure that. So I'm here to say hi and to let you know that I'm so excited to work together and work for our community here in Alamosa, both the city and the county. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you and the other county commissioners as well. Thank you. Okay, so I don't have any other comment cards, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda, and we'll go to ceremonial items. We have the introduction of Rachel Byrd, Development Service Director. Rachel, if you would like to come up to the podium, and I'm not for sure if we have anyone who's going to do the, Harry, you're going to do the official introduction?
Yeah, real quickly, Mayor, certainly like to welcome Rachel. Rachel is joining us as our Development Service Director, has a background in urban development, and has spent the last seven years with Alamosa County as the land use administrator. Rachel's going to be a huge asset to the city as she'll move forward the downtown plan, the housing plan, and also the water efficiency plan, and also work on the levee. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rachel, and we welcome her. She's going to be a great asset.
Thank you so very much, Harry. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Rachel, and then we'll have counsel make some comments, okay?
Okay.
All right, tell us a little bit about yourself then.
I am just over the moon about working for the city, so these are all the projects that I've loved and cared about for years. And your planning department's always been very generous, and your city manager's always been very generous in letting me participate from the county perspective, and I think we've built really great bridges over the years, but to be able to be part of the projects, especially the downtown plan, is a really big deal for a landscape architect. So I'm really happy to be part of the team, and everybody's been wonderful. I can't believe Harry just gave up an opportunity to embarrass me in public, but, and Lori, but it's okay. So it's, I really feel like big things, exciting things are happening for our community, and if we all work together and we have the vision, I think it's all going to come to fruition. So thank you for having me.
Okay, and thank you, and we're going to have some counsel make some comments. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson, your light is on, right? Okay, so if we can start off with Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson, then Counselor Brawls.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Rachel, I just wanted to say it's such a pleasure to have you on our team, so thank you for always being, I think, a really good team player at the county, and just really excited to have you officially on our team at the city and being able to bring all of your perspective and all of the support. I'm already seeing excellent emails about meetings you've been in and have made some connections with others who are like, oh, she's going to be awesome. So just wanted to welcome you and say thank you for being a part of all of the exciting things that we have going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson?
Yeah, I'd also like to welcome you, and I agree with you. I think there's big things happening here, and so it'll be awesome to have you as a part of that. It sounds like you've come with tremendous amount of experience, so good luck, and we look forward to having you on the team.
Thank you.
Counselor Brawls?
I just want to say the same thing. Welcome to the city. We're glad we have you, and we expect great things. Thank you.
I hope so.
Okay, I don't see any more red lights or hands raised, so I just want to make sure I'm giving everyone an opportunity. Rachel, I'll wrap it up and say thank you so very much. I've had the pleasure to work with you on another committee and really appreciate your professionalism, your insight, and you willing to share your thoughts with the team. So welcome aboard, and we wish you much success.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty. Okay, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Vehill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles. The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us down to the next item on the agenda, Presentations from Outside Agencies. Tonight, we're going to have two of those presentations. The first one is going to be the SLV Health Access Harm Reduction Project Sharp Update by Ms. Charlotte Ladone.
So thank you, City Council members, for inviting me. This is the third year as of February that we've had Sharp here in the Valley, and I was planning to come last year, but we all know what happened, so I wasn't there, so I just felt compelled to give you an update. I'm hoping you received the information. And I won't belabor that. I thought I would spend more time giving you a brief update of what's not in here, and then open for questions, because I haven't been here in a couple of years about this program. So let me just start by saying, this program is in existence for a number of different reasons, one of which is the partnerships that we've had. Without those partnerships, we would not be here today. So Valleywide, SLV Health, Public Health, Mental Health, Rio Grande Hospital, Law Enforcement, they've all been part of this program. And when we were the first rural agency in Colorado to open a harm reduction program three years ago, and since then, I've had calls from other rural agencies that are saying, how did you do this? You know, how can we do this in our area? And it's the partnerships. I think without those partnerships, we would not be able to do it. We've been able to get some very generous funding. Our executive directors have worked hard to keep us afloat, so it's not a burden on the city and county. And I'm happy to say we continue to be funded with that. What questions do you have?
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll turn it over to the council members, and I'll recognize council members by either raising your hand. If you're on Zoom, I see Counselor Daniel with her hand raised, or either turning your mic on so I could see you here, okay? Counselor Daniel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Charlotte, thank you so much for the work that you do. I know we talk harm reduction all the time, but can you talk a little bit about the services Sharp offers, and I know the locations were in the in the handout you sent us, but if you can share that with the people who maybe didn't get to see the handout, or who may be watching this later?
Sure. So we're located with the Rocky Mountain Counseling Center. They were very supportive and generous from the beginning to allow us to stay there. As you well know, we aren't welcome everywhere in the city, and that's not new, but they have been very welcoming, and with that space, we've been able to offer our program. So what do we offer? First of all, we offer clean needles and syringes. The purpose of that really is to reduce abscesses, infections, and also HIV and hepatitis C, which we know, because we test our clients twice a month, we know that that's something that you can get from used needles, from needles that have been used a number of times and cause injury as they go into the arm or wherever else they're injecting. We also offer, along with the HIV Hep C testing, we offer condoms. Again, in order for people to be safe, we offer clothing in the wintertime and in the springtime, in an effort to give people access to items that will keep them warm. We also offer access to healthcare. So right now, in Rio Grande County, which we opened in November, we're in the Behavioral Health Building in Del Norte, and they offer access to counseling services. We also work with SLV MAT here in the valley and connect people that are interested in addiction recovery through medication. And they have one of their staff members there to help facilitate making the appointments, showing a warm face, giving a warm handoff. So those are some of the services that we offer, and as you can tell from the handout, our clients are very happy to have us there. They were concerned with COVID that we would close, and we just decided it was more important to stay open and have the safety available. So everyone there wears masks. They come to us, we give them masks. If they don't have that, just in an effort to remain safe so that we could continue our services.
Thank you, Charlotte. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Counselor Carson. You have to talk into the mic, Counselor Carson, so they can hear you on the.
I'm sorry. It's a little weird.
I know, it makes you want to touch something like that.
Thank you, Charlotte. I have a quick question, or maybe it's not a quick question, my question.
Well, I only have eight minutes.
What kind of data collection are you guys?
So part of the data I've shown you, so we collect demographics, where are people from, and that's allowed us to see that the second greatest need is in Rio Grande County, which is why we opened there in November with our partners. We get age, we get homelessness, or where people live, we get the kinds of drugs that they are using so that we know what kind of interventions are going to be available to them. What else do we gather? We do surveys periodically to assess what their needs are. We did a COVID vaccine survey, for instance, to see how interested they are in a vaccine.
The reason I ask is because I pose a question for Counselor Daniels, too. I just, I don't know if this is any way any of this data is usable by the Homeless Coalition to address maybe any connections there, or any of those community issues that may be affected there. I don't know if there should be, or could be some partnering there as well. So I just putting that out there, I'm not exactly sure. And again, I'm not tying the two together, but I think some of the homeless population is affected by that, and so if we could, you know, direct some of that towards that population directly, it may help because I've.
Yes, so we certainly do have a homeless population. They may be couch surfing. I didn't mention, we have two case advocates that are available through our program for clients to help them find housing, to help them find food, to get them connected to social security if they need that, to get them whatever they need. And so we've got the case advocates meeting with them one-on-one to assess some of those needs and get them connected.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Grego?
Thank you, Mayor. Charlotte, you explained all your programs really well. How does the word get out what you do and where you're located? Is there some kind of for better term, marketing, or, I mean, where do you, where do you, does it get out by word of mouth from some of your clients, or how does that work?
So we did a big marketing campaign when we started. We found out that didn't really work. Our client doesn't read the newspaper, they don't listen to the radio. So when our first client came in, he came actually down from Denver to live here and then found out about our program. He was grinning people every week, and now people tell other people, and I think that's really our best marketing. We put things in the paper periodically, but that's more for the community to let them know what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Carson?
One suggestion might be social media, and it is, you know, so that population would.
Yeah, thanks for that suggestion. We do that periodically, and I'm hearing we could do more of that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I don't see any other hands raised or mics on, so I'll just wrap things up and just ask you, Ms. Ladone, about how many people do you believe you serve on a monthly basis?
Anywhere. Today, we had seventy, some days we have in the eighties. Before we opened up in Del Norte with COVID, we certainly saw an increase in the number of clients that we were seeing. We were getting over a hundred. So our average is between seventy and eighty-some, and Del Norte is seeing between fifteen and twenty. Last week, we had seven new intakes in Del Norte, so word is getting out again. And I would like to invite all of you to come, not all at once, because we're in a small space, but one at a time. You're welcome to come every Wednesday morning from nine to noon, and we're right in between the Schultz Realty and the Oxygen Place. They're on 285 South.
Okay.
Going to La Jara.
Okay, well, we thank you for all of the work that you and your team are doing in the community, and we appreciate the services that you're providing.
And thank you, and I welcome calls as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have an outside funding report for the senior center, and we have Ms. Lynette Cotton. Sure. Please, help yourself. Thank you so much.
Well, we would definitely like to thank the Alamosa City Council for all the support that we get from y'all. I'm sorry I missed you back in March. I guess I didn't do the Zoom instructions the correct way. But anyway, thank you for forgiving me and letting me have another chance to meet with y'all. We are open full-time now. We're open from nine to three. We're now serving lunch inside the building, but we still are offering to-go lunches for those who are still not comfortable coming in for a congregate meal. And we have all kinds of activities that happen every day. In the little, in the information that I passed out to you, it gives you an idea. The COVID really, the pandemic and the closing of the senior center really did affect us, affected our fundraising ability. We couldn't rent the building, but you know, it was amazing, all the support that we got from the community and still from the folks. We made phone calls to our members just to make sure that they were all doing okay, and they appreciated that. So we have a great Hawaii trip planned in October. We weren't sure it was going to happen, but it is going to happen. So as of today, we have twelve people signed up, just kind of a miracle, but we are hoping for some more. Anyway, kind of our big exciting news is that we sold the Marsh House, and with some of the proceeds of that, we are adding a room to the senior center, right off at the pool room. So we're going to use it for a wellness and exercise room, kind of an overflow, you know, for any other activities that we don't really want to take up the dining room all the time. So, I mean, things are hopping, and people are so excited to be back and just able to meet with their friends and not be alone at home. And I think our population really did, was affected by the isolation part, and I'm open for questions.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation, and we'll recognize council members who have their hands raised or either have your light on. It looks like Counselor Carson has his light on first. We'll start off with Counselor Carson, then Counselor Brawls.
Thank you very much for your report, and thank you for opening and doing what you guys are doing right now. You're absolutely right. Your population was extremely affected, and it's wonderful that you guys have the facility open and you have people interacting, because it's great for our sanity, and so thank you very much. Good luck, and we will continue to support you guys.
Thank you. We're happy to.
Thank you.
I was going to say, we appreciate your, excuse me, we appreciate your organization, what it does for the community. And, you know, I do enjoy going to the meetings and and the board that you have is a great board, and just, you know, the whole senior citizens, just the atmosphere is really good, so. And I enjoy.
We're never boring.
Been there a couple of times.
Thank you.
So thank you what you do, and keep doing what you're doing.
Well, we appreciate you coming to our meetings and representing the city council, city, and it's always good to have that extra voice. We've, Mr. Yon also provides that through the county, and sometimes we need that, somebody to come in and straighten things out just a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Okay, so we're going to go to our Zoom council. We have Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cotton, I want to echo what the rest of our council is saying. Thank you so much for the programs you run for our seniors, for our senior citizens. One question I did have, and I know it's a different program, the Meals on Wheels, how does that, do they operate out of your building also, or how does that work? I know they're a separate entity, and they do work differently.
They do. They're part of the South Central Colorado Seniors. That's the nutrition program. So what they do is they cook all the meals in Montevista, then they bring them to the other centers, and that's, it's actually called homebound. We have always called it Meals on Wheels, but in their program, it's called Serving the Homebound. And so they put things in coolers and keep them hot and keep them cold, and then we have drivers. There are a couple who are paid, and when I say we, I don't mean the Senior Citizen Center.
Yeah, I understand.
And then they will drive them out into the community, into the rural areas, and deliver those meals. My mother-in-law is a, she has that same thing, and you know, one of the things she told me is, it's so nice to have somebody open your door and say, hello, Mabel, how are you doing today? And, you know, so I think it means a lot to the folks when they do get that meal delivered, so it's a great program, and we're happy to have the building to be able to serve out of.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cotton.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the services that you and your team provide, so thank you for doing that work. I think it's so valuable. And then just wondering if you have connections with like the Behavioral Health Group or other places for maybe those seniors who haven't come back out, or maybe who are scared to come back out, to outreach them for their mental health needs, or like a peer person just to connect to you? Do you have those resources, or is that something that you'd like to create?
We do have resources with Behavioral Health. They come by, oh, probably every couple of months, with flyers and with programs, and they reach out. They also send me emails with, I mean, they're there, they're available, and they realize that there are some folks who struggle through this. So I've never had anybody from our population call me and ask for that kind of resource, but just the fact that we know it's there should they need it. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any lights set up on mics or hands raised, so I'll just wrap things up, then Ms. Cotton, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is there an age requirement to be considered a senior to participate in?
If you're fifty, you get to come.
Wow, eligible then.
All right, I'm going to send you an application. I have your email address.
This Hawaii trip is looking very interesting right now.
You know, we really, we enjoy our seniors, we enjoy our programs, and it's just, we have a really good time, so. And thank you so much for all your support.
Oh, you're welcome. We appreciate everything you all do, and I may be going on one of those trips with you one of these days.
Well, we're going to Hawaii.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Thank you, and I do have to scoot, so.
Okay, take care. Have a good one. All right, good reports tonight. Alrighty, so counsel, we're going to move on down to the next item on the agenda. We have Board Commission's Business Advisory Board Appointments. I'll turn this over to Ms. Martinez to instruct us on how she wants this to go.
Okay, sounds good. I'll just give you an overview real quick. So you did do your annual recruitment for the advisory boards. You appoint those now in June at your first meeting. So if you looked at your agenda, it did have the availability of current positions for each board. You interviewed all those applicants at work sessions on Wednesday, May fifth, Wednesday, May nineteenth, and then previous to this meeting. So I guess we'll just start with each board. The counselors on Zoom did receive their ballots virtually, and I've gotten those back. The ones here in person, you should have your ballots right in front of you. So if you filled those out, you can give them back to me, but we'll just go one by one, go with Planning Commission first, and then Rec Board, H-PAC, Library Board, Tree Board, and the Homeless Coalition, and then the Personnel Board. So you guys do appoint by way of votes, and that's why you have your ballots.
So what's the first one again?
We'll do Planning Commission first.
Okay.
And so for Planning Commission, there are three vacancies. We have a position for Ward Two, one for Ward Three, and then we have an alternate position. And we got one applicant for Ward Two, two applicants for Ward Three, and then you're welcome to appoint into the alternate.
Thank you, Mrs. Spleetham.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you these votes real quick, and then I'll be back.
So we'll be preparing for the next ballot attorney, and are you going to do the Rec Board next? Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, should we, should we move each board individually?
Ms. Martinez, how do you want to do that? After you tell her the votes, we move, make a motion to vote?
Yeah, we can do that.
On each group?
Do you want to, or we can do the motion at the end.
At the end, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill, for bringing that up. Thank you, Counselor Vehoe for bringing that up.
Okay, so after I tallied those, so Mark Manzanera is appointed to Ward 2. And then I had three votes for John Adams for Ward 3, three for Sandra Ortega. So you guys will have to discuss or vote again to choose which positions to put those in, those two.
So council, I think that the, it makes sense at this point to, if, if anybody has any discussion that they want to engage in in terms of why they think one is, one candidate is, is more appropriate than the other. This would be a time to do that because otherwise you're going to just vote the same way. So you could engage in discussion and then re-vote and if it comes out in a tie again, I would suggest that you wait until you have a full council and, and an odd number of people voting.
Okay, and will we get new ballots? Are you going to give us our original ballots back?
I'll give you your original back.
And then we just write something at the bottom or what?
Put it, I don't know, put a second round is in parentheses or something? How do you want to distinguish that?
Second round, that's good.
Okay, she's writing a second round column for you.
I think we have an issue. I have to, I have to get something clarified. And I actually wanted it clarified in the interview, but I wasn't, I was on Zoom and it was kind of fast. I don't think, and I could be wrong, so my, you know, forgive me if I'm wasting time here. But I don't think Sandra Ortega is in Ward 3. I think she's in.
You're right.
Yeah, but she's, she's on the, she's on the right, on the west, east side of the street, which puts her in Ward 4. And so I wasn't sure that night, but I, I had to clarify before we ran this vote again. She's not in Ward 3. She's in Ward 4, so that solves our vote right there.
It solves it right there. It's a very valuable discussion to have because it takes away the issue.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate that. So we no longer have an issue? Right?
No.
Okay.
Correct. So we're up to Rec Board. Is that the next one?
Yeah, so you guys is, so John Adams will serve in Ward 3 and then Sandra Ortega will serve as the alternate. So now we'll go on to Rec Board. You have three vacancies on this board. You had four applicants. You have three people who are currently on the board and one new person apply.
That's trash.
I do want those back.
Okay. This is the trash man. Oh, okay.
Okay, so after the votes for Rec Board, I have that you guys voted for Brian, I don't really know how to say his last name, Cutarella, Rusty Johnson, and Robert Anderson. So, and you only had three vacancies. So John Adams would come up. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go to H-PAC. If you can fill out that one, you only had one vacancy. And we only had one person requesting reappointment, which was Patrick Stanford.
Okay.
And we did not receive new applications for that board. Okay, and for H-PAC, you guys have reappointed Patrick Stanford.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Now if you can give me your Library Board ballots. On Library Board, you had four vacancies, one person requesting reappointment, and then two new applicants. Okay, and for Library Board, you have all appointed William Krebs, Jamie Kaufman, and Harrell Patel.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll do Tree Board. You have four vacancies, three regular positions and one alternate. And we only had the people who are already serving on the board request reappointment. Okay, and you guys have reappointed Adam Moore and Kevin Rabel to the Tree Board.
Okay.
And now we'll go with the Homeless Coalition.
Thank you.
And for Homeless Coalition, you have six vacancies. You have the Health System Rep, the Professional Substance Use Rep, At-Large Rep, Business Community Rep, Mental Health Rep, and the Housing Rep. Okay, so those ballots, after they came back, you've appointed Don Malgueras to the Housing, as the Housing Representative. For the Health Systems, you've reappointed Donna Weehee. For Business Community, you've appointed Mary Hoffman. For the Mental Health Rep, you appointed Kylie Sowards. And then you guys did have, looks like I have four of you, and I don't know if the counselors on Zoom chose to do this either because it wasn't on the virtual ballot. But the ones that I have here on the paper ballots have chosen to appoint Vanessa Sonnen into the At-Large Rep. So, are you, is Counselor Grego and Counselor Daniel okay with that too?
I'm comfortable with it.
Me as well.
Okay, sounds good. Then that's who you've appointed to the Homeless Coalition. And I think the last ballot you have should be Personnel Board. And we had one vacancy and just one person request for appointment. Okay, and you guys have reappointed Ralph Simblem, Simblem, to the Personnel Board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Squeezel and Ms. Martinez. Appreciate that. Thank you, council, for voting. We'll go ahead and take a motion recognizing all of them, and I believe Counselor Vehoe, go ahead.
Mayor, thank God we approve all the folks that we voted for with the adjustment on the Homeless Coalition of Virginia Sonnen to the At-Large. And on the Planning and Zoning, Sandy Ortega to the Alternate.
Okay, seconded. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any mics lit. I don't see any hands raised. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Ms. Martinez, for a vote.
Okay. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Vehoe?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you and thank you, council. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, business brought forward by city staff.
Mayor, one comment if I may before you move on.
Go ahead, Counselor Grego.
Sorry for interrupting you. In years back, we used to meet with each of these boards, and I think maybe this is a question for Rahali. When do we start scheduling a meeting with, with each of these boards and maybe getting some input on what's going on with the boards? And other, if they need other things and stuff. I know we used to at least meet once a year with them.
Yeah, we have them set for certain times of the year on the agenda. So we did have Tree Board already come, I think, a couple of meetings ago. So the rest of them will probably be upcoming. We might have missed a timeframe for a few of them, but I've gotten timeframes from each of them. When would be good for them to come to council?
Okay, I just thought I'd point that out so we would meet with them at least once a year.
And then we do still plan on having the Board Dinner, so later this summer.
All right, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, so now we're moving on down the agenda to Public Works, Second Reading, and Public Hearing of Ordinance Number 7-2021. We have Deacon here today. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, council. So Ordinance 7, 2021, Second Reading, is for the rezoning of about 26 acres of property that's currently vacant north and west of Maroon Drive and, thanks Holly, and Clark Street. Currently, it's owned commercial business. It's remained vacant since it was annexed 20 years ago. And the applicant is requesting a mixed-use designation to give it some more flexibility and marketability. It opens up a lot of opportunities. This checks all the boxes in our Uniform Development Code, so it meets all of the statutory requirements. It also receives a full endorsement from Planning Commission for approval. And it, it's really a kind of a big need. We've got over 200 acres of vacant, developable, commercial property in the city. And very little that could be used for any sort of residential uses. And with our Housing Action Plan and Needs Assessment, it's, it's kind of a slam dunk.
Okay, thank you so much, Deacon. So what I'm going to do is open up the public hearing and then we'll listen to any comments from the public. And then I'll, if we don't, after we finish that part, I'll turn it back over to the council for comments and questions, okay? So at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing for Ordinance Number 7-2021, an ordinance rezoning 26.225 acres. If we have anyone who's in the audience who would like to come up to the podium to make any comments at this particular time, feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium to make comments. So I'll go back to the Zoom attendees. And Ms. Martinez, if you could let them know how to unmute just in case they would like to participate in the hearing before we close it.
Okay, so if you're on the Zoom app, just use the raise your hand feature to let me know that you want to speak. And then if you're on a cell phone, it'll be star nine to raise your hand. And I do have one person who is raising their hand, so it looks like Preston, I think it's Preston Porter.
Okay.
Let me bring him in.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mr. Porter.
Excellent. Yeah, this is Preston Porter here. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I just wanted to be here to speak on behalf of the property owner and say that we are excited about the potential for opportunity on land that has been for sale basically for 17 years. So I'm not, I'm not anticipating an explosion in, in development or anything, but this certainly helps us fill a need that we have for this type of zoning in the city. So if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm glad, I'm glad Deacon's done an amazing job of putting this forward. And obviously, this goes hand in glove with your guys' new Housing Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Appreciate it. Ms. Martinez, do you see any other attendees with their hands raised who would like to make comments in this hearing while it's open?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So being that I don't see anyone in the audience or anyone on the attendee list, we're going to now open up the hearing and turn it back over to council for their response. Okay, we have Counselor Carson.
Mayor, barring that there are no comments, I was going to make a motion that council adopt Ordinance 7-2021 on Second Reading, recognizing the subject property for commercial business to mixed.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Counselor Brawls? Okay. All right, so Ms. Martinez, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Vehoe?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the good job, Deacon. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda, Committee Reports. So if we have any- Okay, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda, committee reports. So if we have any council members who have any committee reports, please turn your mics on or raise your hands now so I can recognize you. I will start off with the mics first. Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a Zoom meeting with the library board last week, and probably the biggest thing to announce is that they're going to expand their hours in person going in there and that very soon, if not already, and they're very excited about that. They got the summer reading program for the kids kicking off. That's good. And at the next meeting, we're going to talk about having meetings in person. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Okay, now I'll go to my Zoom council members. We'll start off with Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did also attend the Alamosa Homeless Coalition Zoom meeting. Thanks to Counselor Daniels, it finally got me on there. I was able to get on there. There was a lot of discussion on the St. Benedict campsite, the monthly volunteer cleanup, the huts. They discussed a lot about the housing study. We got a lot of real good input from what's lacking in the study. So that was, it turned out pretty good. Our next meeting is going to be June the 22nd, and we are planning on meeting in person, I guess. I guess I hold it there at City Hall, Chris. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Grego, for staying the whole time. I had to leave the homeless coalition meeting early, so I appreciate our teamwork there in multiple ways. I did attend the Alamosa Housing Authority meeting, and then we did also receive some updates via email about some great communication that's happening between the city team and the housing authority team. They are redoing their bylaws. They will be following state statute. So I know I spoke at the last meeting I was in attendance about, about them thinking about changing some of the ways they are doing things. They will not be changing that. Both Eric and Anna and their attorneys have met, and per state statute, the, the members will be appointed by the mayor or city council and/or. So I think that won't shift, but they are updating their bylaws. They're looking at different kinds of things that are going to be helpful to them. They are also still going to use the housing study to help determine. They've been talking to all of us. We know about the pilot money and things like that. So I know they're going to come up with a proposal that they'll share, starting with the city staff team before it comes to city council, but really excited about the work they're doing on the housing authority grounds. And they always have excellent questions about what's happening in the, you know, homeless situation, what's happening at the city. I feel like our connection is really, really good. And then our new appointee to the housing authority, Don Malgueras, was active in the meeting, and I think she's going to be a huge asset. They seem to really appreciate what she was bringing to the table. So that was very helpful.
Thank you very much for that update, Counselor Daniel. Okay, so we're going to go on now to staff announcements. Mr. Reynolds?
I believe Eric is the only one that has announcement.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to let you know that for your next meeting on June 16th, I will be at the bottom of the goosenecks of the San Juan River in a canyon and won't be attending. Mark Loy, who you've had substitute for me before, is able to attend, but only by Zoom because he will be in Wyoming. So since we're still doing hybrid, I told him I thought that would work, but I just wanted to make sure that the council was comfortable with that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for making sure that we had someone to stand in for you.
Yep.
Zoom will work. It's all good. All right, thank you. Okay, so council, we're going to move on down to local liquor licensing authority actions. We're going to have two different actions tonight. One is just simple consent calendar A, and then the other one is an actual liquor licensing needs and desires hearing, okay? So we'll take a motion for the first. Your consent calendar B. Yes, I'm sorry, I probably said A right. Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So next, under item B, we have the liquor licensing item, needs and desires hearing, a new application for a hotel restaurant license for the Thai Hut restaurant that's located on 716 Main Street. Is that going to be you, Mr. Suezal?
Yes, Mayor, if you would turn the meeting over to me, I will open the public hearing and conduct that and then return it to council for further discussion.
Okay, I will officially turn the meeting over to you, Attorney.
Okay, thank you. So I do know we have the applicant here, and what we will do is have her make a presentation to council about the the reasons for the liquor license application and what she's looking for, and then give council an opportunity to ask questions directly of the applicant, and then I will open it up for comments from particip, from the, the audience. Anybody wishing to make a comment either for or against issuance of this proposed liquor license will be able to speak at that time, and then I'll turn it back over to council. So let's see, I think. Yes, I'm not going to try to pronounce your name, ma'am, because it's at least as bad as mine. Siri, go ahead and, and come to the podium and present the, the application to council. And I see, sorry. I see that you're carrying up what looks like the poster for the notice. And do you have anything else, any petitions or anything to present?
Yeah, I have like some petition support that I, you know, I didn't realize that I might need that. So last night, just walk around like our neighbors, like business neighbors, and they, they agree, you know, they they, they have no objections about, you know, be having like liquor sale there. So I don't know that I can be, yeah, the podium is talking, so.
So if you want to bring the, the notice over to the clerk, she'll keep that. We'll call that exhibit A. And Ms. Martinez, can you confirm when that was published in the newspaper?
I don't have the date, but it was published for this, and then this has been up since April 26.
Okay. And, and with the petitions, we've got two sheets of petition signatures, is that right?
Yeah, because I just did it last night. It's a short notice.
I'm not being critical. I'm just making sure that I have all of the sheets. So we'll call that exhibit B, and I will pass this to council to review while, while you're making your presentation.
Okay, because like we have business license 2016 at the previous location on 525 Main Street. It's the same name that Thai Hut restaurant. And then during the pandemic, you know, we have, we, you know, have like a financial, financial crisis and a lot of like problems. So we relocate right now. So we moved to 716 Main Street. It used to be the Bistro Rialto. So we just moved there for a couple of months, and then we renovated place not really to fully operate yet. So probably like this week that we will, you know, open for the publics and doing diet and saying sushi and stuff like that. So that's why I figure maybe like if we have some BOY to serve customer while they eating sushi, maybe like some, you know, maybe it's better, you know, so that's why we figure, so we apply for the new liquor license there. So we're going to have like probably like a couple of tables on a sidewalk as well to serve because right now the capacity is very small, much smaller than the previous location. That's why, but I think, you know.
Okay, council, if you have any questions for the applicant, now would be a time to ask them.
Okay, we'll start off with Council Broyles first.
Did you have a liquor license at the prior location?
Yeah, I did.
Under the same name?
Under the same name.
So we need a new liquor license because they changed location?
Yeah, so I'll answer this question. So the cost, so she, she chose to do the new application rather than a change of location application because it was cheaper because state fees were waived. If she would have did change of location, she would have needed to renew her license on top of paying for the change of location fees. And so that costed more than just doing, surrendering that license at the old location and doing this new application.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it appears, it appears that there's quite a few liquor licensed within that one block area, right?
Yeah.
I guess I'm just questioning the need for a liquor license that's in such a condensed area.
Well, you can if you know the answer. I, I don't know the answer to how many liquor licensed establishments there are in that, in that area. I know that the Bistro Rialto had a liquor license because I've had wine there. So it's not changing that situation, certainly. Any other comments, Councilor Broyles?
Oh, that's it. You're good. Okay, thank you. Counselor V. Hill?
Siri, thank you for presenting today. Have, at your previous location, did you have any problems with serving liquor or alcohol?
Not at all.
Thank you. And you were in, you, how long were you at that previous place?
I believe like we applied since like beginning of 2017 because we, we just like start operating on December 2016. So at, at that time, I think my ex-husbands apply, you know, I think it 2017 that he's, he had the license. If, if we can, yeah.
And Holly, there was no infractions or anything at their previous place?
There was not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Okay, so now I'm going to go to our Zoom council members. We have Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Siri, for being here. We appreciate you so much. Just wondering if, what kind of training you do for your staff on the serving rules and laws and how you train them?
Yeah, so I usually like train them about like the age that they are requiring to like serve the liquors. And every time like we have to check the IDs for, you know, the person who's order either YV or liquors, something like that. So I train them on a regular basis, probably like once a week or something like that, so.
Have you ever used a formalized training, like the tips training?
Not really like a formal, just like because like a family business, so I, I train them like, like just informal way.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands raised. Siri, thank you so very much for coming out tonight and sharing that information with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is the time when anybody from the audience can comment on the application, and I think we still have some attendees by Zoom, and anybody here in person also is welcome to make their way toward the podium. I don't see anybody in person making their way toward the podium. Do we have any Zoom hands raised?
We do not.
So Mayor, it doesn't look like there are any comments from the public. I would close the hearing and turn the matter back over to council.
Thank you, Mrs. Suezal. Okay, so Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should allow this license for liquor because there was no infractions at the previous place. They're responsible. They do training, although I would like, maybe as Ms. Daniels talking about or alluding to is getting to some tips training. I think that's important, but that's where I stand. I think we should allow this license. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. So is that a motion? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I just think that there, it's too consecrated, concentrated in that area for liquor license. And again, I worry about our youth and our, our college students, and I, and I question the need. I know the applicant was able to get 17 signatures, but you know, I'd like to see 200 signatures if people really need liquor in that location. I understand that she, you know, that applicant did find at the other place. But this is a change of location and the concentration of liquor places is, is pretty dense in this, in this area, just those two blocked area. And therefore, I, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of approving this liquor license.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Broyles. Counselor Carson?
I don't disagree with Counselor Broyles. Personally, I'm never a fan of liquor licenses, but that's my personal opinion. From a business standpoint, though, it does put them at quite a disadvantage, especially the fact that they're right across the street from a bar and the restaurant that does serve alcohol. So Counselor Broyles is right, there, there is some concentration there. But I think as a council, we do have to promote the well-being of our businesses and not being able to serve a glass of wine with dinner or, or, you know, any other sort of cocktail or spirits that a customer might want puts them at a disadvantage, especially from a competitor across the street. So, you know, against my personal beliefs, I think from a business standpoint, it's a, it's almost a killer if you can't serve alcohol. So I would, I would suggest that we do issue this permit. And with that being said, as long as there's no other comments, I'll make a motion that we do issue the permit for the Thai Hut. Trying to find specifics. But I would make a motion that we approve this application.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I don't see any hands raised by the council members on Zoom to make any additional comments. So Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
No.
The motion carried five to one.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I will bring proposed findings and conclusions for you. Well, I guess they will be presented by Mr. Loy at the next meeting, but I will draft those for your consideration at the next meeting that would, that would grant the license.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Suezal. Appreciate it. Okay, so that brings us to the.
And they'll be on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the last item on the agenda, council comments. If we have any council members who would like to make any comments, please turn on your mic or raise your hand, and I'll recognize you so that you can make your comments. Counselor Carson?
Counselor Suezal, just in the past, if I'm not mistaken, because of the rust from Zoom world, normally we had the findings tonight as well, so she could start serving alcohol post haste. Isn't that the case?
Normally, you make a decision so that she knows what your decision is, but I have to prepare, you have to do written findings, and so I, I don't have those ready tonight because I don't know what your decision would be. So those you have to approve at your next meeting. And it used to be that you wouldn't even make a decision tonight, and you would keep it in suspense until you had the, the both pro and con to look at. Right, and we made that more efficient to say, look, unless it's really controversial and you need to see what it looks like in writing, make your decision tonight so that the applicant knows, but that the written findings follow at the next meeting.
Thank you for that reminder. I wasn't clear on what we had decided.
Thank you, okay.
Mayor, if I may, can we get the counselors to speak into their mics? Because we can't hear over here.
So Mike, you got to speak into your mic. Okay, cool.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting us know. Okay. Okay, council comments. Any comments? Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate all the high school seniors who graduated from our Valley Schools over the last two weeks that they go to college or post-secondary or the military, and they represent all of us real well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carson, into the mic. Counselor Carson, into the mic, please.
I would just like to echo what Counselor Vehil said. Congratulations to all the graduates and say thank you to the rest of council and and to staff for moving forward with in-person meetings. I think it's great to get back to a sense of normalcy. So thank you, and I look forward to many more of these.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a big thank you to the team. I know that I missed the last meeting because I was out of town for family issues, and the time difference would have made it impossible for me to stay awake for the entire meeting. So I appreciate the the support that I received from everyone and the good wishes from my father. So thank you for that. Also, just really wanted to say I've been out at the softball fields and playing on both the coed and a women's league, and I have to tell you, the rec staff are doing an excellent job on the fields. They're doing an excellent job with the entire way everything is running. I feel like the teams are being very civil and appropriate, and it's just been really nice, again, kind of to echo what Counselor Carson said, to to have something normal that we can count on, and that it's flowing well, and they're doing an excellent job. So just wanted to say thank you to our percussion rec staff, because I know they have put a lot of energy and effort into that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, so I don't see any mics later hand raised, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. I want to send a special thank you out to one of our own, Counselor Charlie Grego, who helped with the local veterans celebrate the ceremonies that we had in regards to Memorial Day this week. They had several events and activities to honor the people who've made the ultimate sacrifice. So I think we owe Counselor Grego a great appreciation. Thank you, Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being present at those. As I pointed to you earlier, you know, it seems like it's getting smaller and smaller, but it's so important to keep those traditions and to honor those people. We wouldn't be sitting around these tables at Zoom or that if those people hadn't given their lives for us to continue living the lives that we live, you know. So thank you, Mayor, very much, and it's very well appreciated.
You're welcome, Counselor Grego, appreciate you. Okay, counsel, if we do not have any further discussion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Mayor, bye.